Yeah.
Okay.
Hold this meeting to orders, please silence your cell phones and whatever so that we can conduct business and stand for the invitation from council member. Can I?
Join me in the Lord's Prayer, our Father, who art in heaven, thou would be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've all had a copy of your February twenty twenty-one financials. Were there any questions or concerns on those? So we in consensus to approve those be added to the record? Also received copy of the March twenty twenty-one minutes? Any corrections or omissions or any concerns about the minutes? So we're in consensus to approve those then? Migrations?
The first one is the girls on the run submitted an application to use the perimeter of Centennial Park, four thirteen to six five, on Wednesday and Saturdays from three thirty to five P. M. for their practice.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, and then there's another one, I see.
The other one is just for informational purposes that the Batavia youth baseball has requested to use four youth fields at MacArthur and baseball field at Williams Park every day from eight A. M. to ten P. M. from March first to October thirty-first.
Is that Dan running it?
That's correct.
I want to make sure that he cannot lock the fields.
That's correct. And that he also schedules with other teams that may want to use that field.
Right.
They just put in that overarching, and I let them know that they still have to allow other teams to use the field.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns on that? Okay, now we'll sign some agenda items. Item thirty, twenty twenty-one, the temporary superintendent of water and wastewater. The resolution to allow the community to submit to a grant. And a resolution to work contract for the website. The next city council conference meeting and special business meeting will be held on Monday, April twenty-sixth, seven P. M. at City House Council Boardroom, second floor of City Center. And just so you're aware, today's business meeting, we're conducting that first, the conference meeting is just so that we can get things on at the special business that we'll hold in two weeks. So nothing we're moving today from the conference needs to be voted on tonight, so you're aware of that. Okay, that'll be voted on at the next meeting, and it's a timely thing, but not that timely. So we're just gonna have a special business to cover if we move these items tonight. Okay, just make that clear. Also, we have a proclamation for retired officer Jason Davis. I'm gonna come up here. Second stage. Congratulations. My pleasure. It worked for you for many years. I'm glad you're able to safely retire. Me too. And I'm sure the family feels the same way. Whereas Jason Davis is retired as a police officer from the City of Batavia Police Department on March thirtieth. After nearly twenty-two years of service, Jason began his career with the Batavia Police August twelfth, nineteen ninety-nine. He was previously employed by the Village of Little Valley Police Department and the Tataragas County Sheriff's Office. Throughout his career, he's received many, served in many roles, including as officer in charge, member of the emergency response team, crisis intervention officer, field training officer, general topic instructor, de-escalation instructor, dare instructor, and most recently, department school resource officer, and Batavia City School District. Jason also volunteered as a boys' scout troop leader for many years. Which else have you already?
We have a long list.
And that's right. He served this community and department with professionalism and compassion, has been a positive role model and mentor to other officers and many more in the community. His positive impacts and relationships he created led to many positive outcomes and critical incidents. Now therefore, in true spirit of appreciation for nearly twenty-two years of dedicated service to the City of Batavia, the City Council of the City of Batavia does hereby make this proclamation to sincerely thank Jason Davis for his dedicated service to our community and wish him all the wealth and your retirement. Ten words to your family and friends.
Just wanna once again thank everybody, thank the city for the opportunity they gave me back in nineteen ninety-nine when I transferred here. To all the other law enforcement officers, chief, thank you for all the things that you've given me throughout the years, and, you know, I'm sure the city's in gray hands with everybody that's here present with the City of Batavia Police Department. Most of you I know, they've known for a long time, thank you to the fire chief, thank you, Mr. Tark, most of the city council members as well, you've known me for quite some time, and it's a great opportunity, and I just wanna say thank you once again.
Very well. Now I have a proclamation for Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Council member Carras will read that if someone wants to come up. Let's have that.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, they require police, firefighters, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications of the Genesee County Emergency Dispatch Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, the treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore, being resolved, that City Council of the City of Batavia recognizes the week of April eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
On behalf of the Genesee County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Sharon, Assistant Director Rick Obono, and the Communications Division, I'd like to thank the Batavia City Council for this proclamation this evening. This week, we recognize our dispatchers, and I would like to recognize their hard work, their dedication, and their true professionalism to their positions. Thank you.
City attorneys report? City managers report?
Thank you, Council President. Just a few items to note. The police station feasibility study is scheduled to be finalized in June and presented to the City Council. Right now, we're looking through the market for materials. For wooden steel is so volatile that predicting the prices is becoming quite challenging. We know that the new station will fit on the site in terms of its size and what needs to occur in there with our police force, so we're looking forward to be able to present that in June to City Council. Also continuing is the Jackson Square DRI enhancement project with Architectural Resources, the architectural firm selected to design and engineer the project. They're almost finished with a final design concept, and the next step will be a community engagement session similar to the first one they did. I'm not sure if it'll be in person or in Zoom, but we'll certainly let you know when that occurs, and after that, we garner more community input, we'll be moving towards engineering, and then finally, construction. But the outdoor concert series, if it can occur, should be safe to occur this year in Jackson Square. There was vaccinations available as of this morning at GCC and in Orleans County, so I'm gonna do a quick public service announcement, that anyone that is eligible, which is everyone over the age of sixteen and or eighteen, depending on the vaccination type, can sign up at Genesee County Department of Health's website. So I believe there's still appointments available. Just a friendly reminder to any applicants that do want to utilize our parks for this summer, they need to turn in their applications to us, get their insurance, and their COVID safety plans. The state budget has passed and restored the City of Batavia's AIM aid to a hundred percent. VLT funds as well, however, we're not assured of what level yet because it's not called out specifically in the bill, so we hope to know that soon. And as you're aware, the federal government passed the one point nine trillion COVID relief bill. The federal stimulus funds for Batavia will be approximately one point five eight million, spread over two years. The current guidelines suggest that the funds can be used for sewer, water, and broadband infrastructure projects, or to assist municipalities that lost revenue due to COVID. However, formal guidance is expected to be issued by May tenth, so I'll talk more about that when we know more. Also included in the state budget was an historical increase in CHIPS aid. This year, the city is scheduled to address North Spruce, Chase Park, and Fisher Park, and may be able to add micro-servicing of Two Streets, Garden Drive, and Allen View into their planning. All of these projects were noted in the city's five-year road capital projects plan. Next year, the city will focus on Harvester and Richmond. There is also state touring routes funds that we're seeking information on out of the state budget that may be able to assist with improvements on Route ninety-eight South. That's my update. Any questions? Thank you.
Community reports? Other comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance. Open the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium up front. Once you get up there, you can remove your mask, so it'd be easier for us to hear, and then please put your mask on when you go back to your seat. Please state your name and address before you begin your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On the first bell, that means you have thirty seconds left. Please wrap it up, because after the second bell, which is the total five minutes, I'm gonna have to stop you, and it's awkward when I have to do that in mid-sentence. Call your first person up.
The first was from John Roche, it was an email I received. He said, well, it looks like the state budget will give the City of Batavia its VLT money. I would ask that if the money really comes through, it will not be used to fund any vacant personnel positions. If it is used for that, what would happen next year if the state pulls the money again? I would ask council to use the VLT money to either pay down debt, equipment replacement, or put towards the new police headquarters. Mary Ellen Wilber?
My name is Mary Ellen Wilber. I'm speaking on behalf of my sister, who is seventy-one years old, and lives at fifteen Fisher Park. The reason I am here is because, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm gonna address the City Council. When we all took our road tests and took our driver's ed, and if I'm, please, understand me, I'm not trying to be facetious, but as I recall, that we all learned, and I know there's a police officer, a former police officer, in the room, we were told that drivers must have complete control of their vehicles at all times. That was the number-one rule I was taught when I took my course, when I took driver's ed, and ever since I've been driving for almost fifty years. We were also always told that pedestrians had the right of way, especially when they were in a crosswalk, and that we were always supposed to be cautious. My greatest fear was ever hitting a child. Scares the heck out of me even now. So I'm speaking today for my sister, Michelle Gaylord, who went crossing the street with three of her grandchildren, a fifteen-year-old, Vincent Paul Gaylord, an eleven-year-old, Thomas Michael Gaylord, and her eleven-month-old granddaughter, Christiana Jean McGuire. She was crossing from the main street side closest to Saint Joe's over Ross Street, and you have a little diagram I put in front of you, okay? And the little people are my sister and her children, her grandchildren, and they were in the crosswalk, crossing across Ross Street. The light they waited for to turn red. A woman came to the stop sign, the stoplight, stopped for a second, and then proceeded to go through the light, striking my sister as she moved the, thank God it was an Eddie Bauer stroller away because they had shock absorbers. She fell into the road, the kids jumped back, and the vehicle, the lady just was, oh my goodness, she hit my sister. She said, oh, are you okay? And proceeded to go on her merry way. The two cars behind, the witnesses, called the police. My sister was so shaken, she was so worried about the kids, she waited on the side till her son Joshua Gaylord came to pick them up. Nonetheless, to say that the police in our City of Batavia chose not to ticket the woman who drove, chose not to believe my sister, chose not to believe the two witnesses, chose not to even talk to the eleven-year-old boy, Thomas, who when he told his teacher at Robert Morris today, confirmed the fact that, oh no, Thomas, drivers are always supposed to be in control, and you never, ever, ever hit a pedestrian, and pedestrians always have the right of way. So that reinforced that this kid that's had nightmares and said to his nana, nana, I should have jumped in front of their car to save you and gotten hit. He's had nightmares. Okay, two witnesses called the police department. My sister called and spoke to Officer Cohen, who said to her, well, there was no report and there was no damages, you didn't go to the hospital, and my sister has been a nurse and served this community for thirty-five years at the VA Hospital, helping veterans, and you all know that. You know me, that I've served this community on the City Charter Review Commission, and as a youth board member for six years. People that haven't lived in this community don't know the zangy girls, okay? But you know that we have served this community, and are honest people. This person, Mr. Cohen, Officer Cohen, told my sister, huh, we know your sister. She called to speak to Chief Hibush, he's not gonna talk to her anyway. See, here's a resentment from what happened to my brother. And I put people in their place when I said, he giggled, Chief Hibush, at my brother, because my brother had OCD and PTSD, and he said my brother was mentally ill with his giggle. But my brother, at that time, did something to help the police department, as he always had in all the emergencies that happened in Batavia. But that's not, that's not either there. This woman, my niece, whose daughter was involved in this, she called for information on the accident, she has to foil the report, okay? She's an attorney and assistant public defender in Livingston County, a well-respected member of the community. Her daughter was involved in this accident, couldn't get a report. My sister can't get any information. Ridiculous. You know the laws, drivers have to be in control of their car, pedestrians have the right of way. This woman was not given a ticket, my family can't do anything about finding any information. What is wrong with the police department in the City of Batavia? And why do kids not respect the police? There's clear evidence. I don't know. You tell me what's going on in the City of Batavia. Thank you very much for your time. I am moving back to the City of Batavia.
Wendy Walker?
My name is Wendy Walker, and I live on sixty-two Otis Street. We received an increase in the assessment of our house today, and I'm here to protest that and contest that assessment. I don't know how that was made, or why the increase to such a dramatic amount, but the problem being is, we live on the south side. I don't know where this money is going, that you're gonna be using, because the south side has not been improved. Three streets over from us, there's a lot of crime, and I think we all know that the whole street is full of a lot of crime. There's been nothing cleaned up, there's been nothing done. Last time I checked, and even in the Pledge of Allegiance, we say for liberty and justice for all. What about my justice? Where are my taxes going? We pay the highest taxes in the nation, and there's nothing, nothing to show for it. Not where I live, not on the south side, no improvements, nothing. If I'm wrong, I surely would be willing to acknowledge my error in saying that, but I don't believe it. I don't. And I'm here speaking, a lot of my neighbors are not here, but they feel the same way I feel, to the point, some of them are relocating out of the state. People are moving out of New York State for these very issues. And I think that we should take that into consideration in this small, little town of Batavia. I don't, I don't understand this. If we're getting all this money from the government, and I don't know what that money is necessarily earmarked, or I don't understand all of it, but it would seem we could help the little people in Batavia. My husband is disabled on a fixed income. His money didn't go up. It's not gonna go up like that. If it goes up twelve dollars every five years, that's a lot. I don't know. I'm just asking for consideration and thoughtfulness in this matter, when you're talking to the little people. I pay a lot of taxes, a lot of my money goes out in taxes, and I just appreciate your consideration today. Thank you.
Karen Sherman?
My name is Karen Sherman. I live at one oh two James Street. Wendy Walker is my neighbor. She said everything, all the issues that I pretty much have in concern. I'm a single mom. I provide for my daughter. I don't get food stamps or anything like that. You guys have raised my taxes every year since I bought my house. I get when you buy a house, comes with a lot of maintenance and stuff, but every single year, something has gone wrong, new roof, my windows have broken, gutters have come off. You drive by, I know Ron downstairs, he's, he noticed my fence is broken. Can't fix it because I had fixed my furnace and hot water thing. Again, my taxes went up nineteen thousand last year for the assessment. This year, you guys are trying to do thirty thousand. This is becoming very hard for me as a single parent. Again, I do not get assistance. I own my own business. I'm trying so hard to do this without having any type of assistance in any shape, way, or form. I've had to pick up two other little odds and ends jobs to try to make ends meet. Again, I just want to know why, where this is going, and answers. Thank you.
Rachel, can you maybe touch on, or someone touch on, the process to, you know, contest an assessment?
Yep, and just to be clear, we did not reassess homes last year due to COVID. We did not feel it was fair to ask people to come in to the assessment board of review, so there was no reassessment last year. And the assessor's not here to speak tonight, but I'll speak from my knowledge of it. When you reassess a home, you assess it on value of comparable sales of like homes, and it's all done through formulas and data. It's not done, I don't even see what reassessments are done in our community, just so everyone's aware. I do know there was assessment letters that did go out this week. Currently, those homeowners who have gotten the reassessment letters can do what's called an informal review. They can call our assessment office, the assessor will gladly speak to you over the phone, on Zoom, or through email, to discuss the level of assessment and why, and you can explain and challenge why that happens. If you don't find that as a remedy, you can move to grievance day, which is the first Thursday after the fourth Tuesday in May, and you can have your assessment formally grieved in front of a board of your peers residents of the City of Batavia.
And this is a normal process, the assessment, they don't just pick houses randomly, they do sections of the city, and they try to rotate it around every so many years. I live on Otis Street as well, I got mine increased as well as you did. It happened five minutes before I came to the meeting, I opened my letter. So I totally understand that. Just so you understand, it's not something that they just picked on your house, it was something that was done through a system, and we couldn't remember the last time it was done. I think it's like a five-year rotation.
We do it annually.
Blocks of the community blocks. It's not the whole community.
Right, the different blocks get done, and every so many years, they come back and they start over at the beginning again. So why that happened, you know, today and that, it's just, it's the time here, and it's one.
One other note is that the city actually has the lowest percentage of taxes you pay. The county is slightly higher, and then the school district, so it's an all-in rate. So when you do get reassessed, we are still the smallest percentage of taxes that you pay in property taxes, and it supports services like police, fire, snowplowing, parks and recreation, traffic.
The one you really want to complain about is school, because school's out of hand. They need to have their head examined.
And just to reiterate that, the, go ahead.
Okay, well, just so everyone knows, we don't raise taxes. The city does not raise your assessment, okay? The assessment, everyone in this room that owns a home is entitled to a fair market value assessment, and this is important when you go to sell a home. The assessments you receive today do not go into effect for some period of time. The school tax portion of the assessment will go into effect in October, and the city-county bill will be May first, twenty twenty-two. What we do at the city level is, we set a total budget tax levy. We set an amount, okay? We're going to tax the citizens, let's say, five and a quarter million dollars. That is broken down then against the assessments. So you take the total tax levy and you break it down against the assessments. We don't raise, today I had a call from a very concerned citizen, and they said, well, you raised my taxes, and now you raised my tax assessment, so you're double taxing me. No, we're not doing anything. And the other thing, a couple of things. One, high housing sales have driven the cost assessments way up. My assessment today, mine went up, I just figured it out, forty-two percent. And I live in a very modest, two-story, old home built in nineteen twenty-nine, it went up forty-two percent. But that doesn't affect the taxes. Next year, the taxes get broke down against the assessed value. And just, these are some older bills, but at that point in time, the city levy was five, roughly five and a quarter million. The county levy was twenty and three-quarters million. But yet, the school district was nineteen and a half million, and then the library was one point four million. So always get on your property tax. So you can see the city portion, it's pretty darn conservative for all the services we have, get off and fire, full-time fire department. It's, you know, a lot of people working, a lot of people protecting the community, our police department, and all the rest of itself. If you go in, I mean, you know, you may have extenuating circumstances, you can meet with the assessor initially and save a lot of problems and explain some of the things, but the assessor can't go into your home. They can only look at your home and appraise the value. But like I said, it's not double taxation. The assessed value, it's nothing to do with the taxes. We set the total tax levy, and that will be broken down next year on the total taxable profits. So it's conceivable, next year, your tax rate per thousand could go down if all things vary.
Well, and I don't know how long you owned your home, but the last two years, this year, we raised one point three eight percent due to the COVID and all the shutdown and loss of revenue. The year before that, the state pulled our half a million dollars of our VLT money. At the last minute, the first week of budget talks, they pulled it. At the last minute, the first week of budget talks, they pulled it. So we were, we were strapped, we had no chance to prevent that. The two years before that were zero, zero, no increase. And the year before that, we actually lowered taxes because the nursing home got on the tax rolls. That offset that tax levy Mr. Byakowski was talking about. So basically spread that out and everybody's taxes went down by a percent and a half, I think, or something. I don't remember the numbers. Rosemary?
Fine and dandy what everyone is saying, but government is out of control. We're not doing anything to help these people. Here's a single mother by herself taking care of her daughter. There is a mother, a woman, a wife, taking care of her husband. Some of you have two incomes coming in. That's fine and dandy for you. But there's people out here that are really hurting and they need help. I don't know what we can do. I know we can't do anything. But they should go to grievance and really, there's no doubt about it. Schools are out of control. I would like to go to the next school meeting and I wanna know if any of you wanna join me. Because everything is just, just out of control. Government is out of control, period. And as far as our, our budget goes and everything else, we're down four hundred thousand. Almost a half a million, even a little bit more than four hundred thousand. And when May comes, you're gonna see where people are really hurting because they're not able to pay their taxes. Okay? Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, the housing market is what's really driving the assessed value up. I have, I have a few friends that are in the housing market. They're looking for new houses. And they're telling me about the horror stories of when they find the house, first of all, they have to react as quickly as possible because the house gets twenty-five, thirty offers. And these offers are going, I just read an article today, the houses are going somewhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars over the asking price. And people are coming in with cash. The, the housing market is, is just booming right now. And that also drives the assessed value. Because the assessed value, they're trying to base on true market value. And if that's the case, we see what the market is doing right now. That doesn't help you, unfortunately. I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer a little bit of advice. My father gave me this advice years and years ago and I've used it. I definitely sign up for Grievance Day and go in there. But don't go in there and just say, I can't afford, I can't afford this raise, please help me out. It's not gonna work. You gotta do your homework. If you go online, if you're able to go online, you can access the Genesee County site. You can access houses in your neighborhood. You can access houses in other neighborhoods that are similar to your house. And compare the assessed values of those houses to the assessed value of your house. If there's houses in your, in your neighborhood, like in my neighborhood, that are in the exact same floor plan as my house, on a similar-sized piece of property, with similar features, that's what you wanna do. You wanna compare how those other houses are assessed versus your house and the similarities. Because that's basically what the assessors do. They look at comparable houses and, and they assess them. Like Bob says, they can't come into your house, they don't know what's in it. They can only assess it from the outside. So do your homework. And like I say, you can do that right on the Genesee County website. You can find, I was just on there because I got my assessment in the mail right before I came here. And I got on the Genesee County site to see the house across the street from me and the house next door to them. They're all the same floor plans. They are all built in the nineteen seventies, the same floor plans. And I wanted to see what their assessment was as well. So you can compare that. And I've gone in and I've argued in the past with the assessor that why is my house being assessed higher than the house across the street or the house next door that's the same exact plan? And, and, and ask them a question. So you go in with, with ammunition as to why you feel that your house is being assessed higher than other people's houses, if that's the case. So do your homework.
The next thing I wanna talk about is Mary Ellen Wilber and the report. Is she gonna be able to get a report from that accident?
I certainly can look into it. I would ask that the individual involved be the one that we release information to.
Please do. I think she deserves to have that report.
May we just ask one more question? Is that allowed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we did look up online and now trying to see square footage and everything because of my house is a ranch. And the thing is, the outside of my house is stucco. There's not a lot of houses around that look like mine that are ranches. So I have decided mine to look like everything else, which is eventually gonna happen because nobody uses the old-fashioned stucco anymore. But I've seen ranges from eighty-six all the way to two hundred thousand. So how do I compare mine to everything else?
So I think the best thing to do is to call the assessor right away tomorrow morning. And they will walk you through the website and show you comparable values and listen to what you have to say, what improvements you have or have not done. Make sure they've got the right rate for your home. And they will, she is there to help you. She is not there to challenge you in any way. They're there to help you do comparables on it. And that's the best way to do it. I don't know that the materiality of it makes a difference.
Well, it's, it's worth at least starting the process. Because the longer you're a homeowner, you're gonna go through this process every five years anyway. So it's a good thing to know and learn.
Rachel, I want to suggest if you call the assessor, if she's not in here at the city, try the town building. Because we use the same assessor. So the hours are trying to split up.
I don't, I don't know if you can take the call there.
Yes.
They do update what the private does. Rachel, if you could look into Ms. Wilber's complaint with the police department and the whole thing and then the report. You can check into that off-grid here and then get back to her.
I'm sure the police department would be happy to get back to the individual involved in the incident.
Right, right. Yeah, and that's the person that they want the answers for. Anything else?
Just go back to the accident. I mean, I didn't understand what she said yesterday. Did she run the red light? Did she make a right turn?
Turned right on red, but she didn't, she, there were pedestrians at the crosswalk.
But doesn't the sign say no right on?
Yeah, there's no right on red.
There's no right on red.
Was she not being considered a hit run?
No, yeah.
They just run?
There's a break on red?
There's no, no.
I didn't know that.
And she left, she got out of her car, I can just tell you, my sister is still black and blue from on her back. She said, are you okay? And my sister's like picking herself up and moving the baby and the kids out of the street. She said, well, I guess so. And the people behind that, it was a big SUV, a black SUV, they are the ones that called the police. And then another person called the police and they gave the reports to the police department. So my sister, Michelle Gaylord, called the police, talked to the officer I sent and asked.
Well, why don't we let, why don't we let Rachel look into it and get back to you?
What we know is our reports, the police department, our report.
Yeah, we have to get back to your sister.
Yeah, she does, she has called and get back to the mom of the baby who called, who was told they had to foil the report.
Well, that's, we'll find out what's going on. We'll make sure this gets.
Thank you, yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
There's obviously some miscommunication there.
I would say so.
Well, the city manager will look into it and get.
I assume the first office I called.
Anybody else? Okay. Unfinished business? Bob, did you cover the assessing?
Just so you know, Bob was gonna cover this anyway. And it was perfect that he was able to explain it with people who had complained. Because if the tax levy and the way the assessment goes, it's confusing sometimes.
And as everyone else, homes become a problem. Two-by-four, that was two hours and eighty-nine cents a year and a half ago. Now it's running between nine to ten dollars. Builders, builders and registered saying if you wanna build a brand-new, conservative, two-story home, four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, because COVID stopped all production of lumber and then everybody was buying lumber. Because they were remodeling during the shutdown. And it was home decoy and line by line.
One of Alice's neighbors' home just was sold for, I think it was a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. A few houses up, I hope you saw.
You'll probably get assessed for two hundred thousand. The good news is the market's going up and the value is there. The bad news is that it's the other side.
It's only good for certain amount of houses from like a hundred something, two hundred something. Not for any more expensive houses, so yeah, that's kind of false.
So median income.
Median income houses, right, yeah.
I asked George this evening if he had any information for me concerning the fear in the wine license for the farmers market. He was on vacation and he was also busy and he will get that information for me for the next meeting, thank goodness. I also wanted to know about Severino's. We were gonna do some at the end of March if nothing was done. I don't see any shovels, I don't see any work over there. Where are we with that? Yeah, it was, but.
But? If you'd like me to, we have to discuss what I'm aware of. We had a meeting with Severino Companies and Sam Severino specifically, with myself, the BDC, and the GCEDC. And they are finalizing their documents for closing in by May or June. I voiced the displeasure of council and the time and length it has taken and that the patience has worn extremely thin. And he said he understands and received the message.
He paid for his burner, right?
Yeah, he paid the city for his permits. The permits expire in July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. And I will not authorize the extension of those. So the manager, I'm authorized, so thank you.
So we're at the end, it's something that has to happen soon or we'll know one way or another. But I'm confident and we're confident that it's closed in May and start moving on that as soon as possible right thereafter.
I sincerely hope he can follow through.
Okay, Resolution thirty, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to create a temporary position of superintendent of water and wastewater.
Seconded by Mr. Guinness. Any questions or concerns? Call, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Guinness, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to allow the community garden committee to submit an AARP community challenge grant application.
Seconded by Mr. Grace. Any questions or concerns?
I have one. It's just a matching grant. I don't believe so. What's the challenge?
That's just the name of the grant. A challenge grant application. They challenge communities to get involved. That's the word, that's the actual title of the grant.
Okay, so they don't, we don't have to.
We do not have matching fees in. We do have a budget line item for the garden of a thousand dollars separately.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Call, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian? Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-two, twenty twenty-one. The lime sludge. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to award a contract for removal, transportation, and disposal of liquid lime sludge.
Seconded by Ms. Christian. Any questions or concerns?
Yes. I'd like to know, when the contract says, states have awarded the eighty, eighty-five different, you earn for net thousand, three hundred and forty dollars per event. What, what definition of per event?
Sure, and I would try to answer that, but I'm gonna go to Ray because I think it's typically, we only do it once a year. And not do I do it.
It's, it's six times a year. Where they come in, they basically remove the lime sediment from the lime bed and all the way through disposal. So we, we've done it six times in previous years and we have it basically budgeted for about six and a half times this year.
Okay, so it's roughly the same given amount of lime sludge?
Pretty, yeah, pretty.
Fifty-four thousand a year, sixty-five thousand.
Sixty in the budget for it.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna say, I thought we were budgeting somewhere at sixty-seven thousand. So we're under, we're doing good, but it's a fair price, that's what you're saying. Okay, any other questions or concerns? You wanna call, please?
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Mr. Byakowski, seconded by Mr. Karaz. Allo, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian? Karaz?
Yes.
Okay, I now call the order of the special conference meeting. Eloquent Trail easements.
Yeah, the first item, the special council meeting and Eloquent Trail easements. Previously, back in twenty sixteen, the City of Batavia Council approved an intermunicipal agreement to split the local cost share of the Eloquent Trail and the completion of the project to maintain a portion of the trail within the city limits with the town of Batavia. In twenty twenty, you saw an authorization for the final payment of a hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, which was our financial contribution to the trail. And what we have in front of us this evening are the easements that we would take on for a thirty-year term. And we would agree to maintain and operate as a public improvement. And the trail would continue to be restricted from vehicular access. So the easements are six, six, five, East Main Street, Batavia Gardens, Eloquent Station, and Almond Cemetery.
And all those copies are in here for you to read. The one question I add, when it defines in the city limits, does that mean the park within the DeWitt Park?
No. So DeWitt Park is not included in that specifically. The county will maintain that portion of the trail. And Ray, correct me if I'm wrong on any portion of this. So it would just be within the city limits.
Because technically, that park is in the city limits. That's why I ask. It doesn't carve that out.
Right, it goes.
It's a county park, so it's under county.
So being a county park that covers that part.
Pearl Street to Cedar Street, and that's why it stops at Cedar Street. So good question.
All right, the, the other question is, when do we have scheduled times to maintain the trail? Because I went and drove it the other day. And the park from Jackson to Pearl Street is, is pretty washed out. It's pretty washed out and there was debris, there's surgical masks laying on the side of the road. You know, now that's the good thing. It's all the COVID, everybody's throwing their mask away or they're falling out of their pockets. And this waste is laying around on our streets now. And there's some on the trail itself. So I, I mean, I know it's spring and I'm not saying that it looks like it's got spring, that winter look to it. I'm just curious, what's our timetable? Do we need to maybe put together some volunteers? I mean, what, what do we need to do to get?
So there's multiple answers. We need to accept the easements, number one. Right now, the town of Batavia has committed to going over areas that have been washed out. Number two, there is a group of volunteers who plan to go down the trail and help clean up, led by John Roach of Adam Miller Toys as well. I don't know if that groups up in functional, but I'll certainly reach out tomorrow on that. And then from then on, we will have ongoing maintenance that will coincide with our parks activity in the spring and summer.
Yeah, I asked the manager today, I was gonna confer with Ray. Just so people realize, with everything the city adds on, there's a cost. And I asked if we could have a rounded-out annual cost to maintain this because there's gravel has to be put down and replaced, tree limbs have to be trimmed and manicured, and signs have to be replaced, so I, I think.
Yeah, I have the answer, but Ray, chime in. About seven thousand in materials every five years. And then we have using our workforce that we already employ to do maintenance on an annual basis. Ray thinks it would take about a week out of their time throughout the entire season. And there will be mowing that will be added along the trail as well. And Ray, if you have anything to add, please do.
No, I think you, you've got, figure about eight to ten times a year that we'll have additional mowing. What we'll add to, takes us about four days in order to mow all the city properties. So along that line. So along that line, every couple of weeks, we would probably throw one more mower down in that area. I would leave roughly five days. Probably not this season because everything has been cut back pretty severely last year. You know, if we have a heavy road, probably two guys in order to go along the course of the trail and trim. Probably figure a week's worth of time for two guys and we're going to do that. As for materials, we're going to still have to kind of figure it out. It is new. The town's idea is that we should be able to build five years without putting a new top on it, another layer of stone dust. But there are some washout areas that they've committed to repairs on this year.
So what will be the annual labor cost?
It could be probably around $4,000 annually. Then you can have a bump on the budget and do that recap at around five years. So you've got about a week's worth of work there also.
I have a question. Carter? Now, if you notice on power campuses, they got these blue lights on there for emergencies. Do we have anything back there for these young girls walking? Because there are a lot of idiots out there, you know, that could be hiding in the woods or whatever, whatnot. And I'm just concerned of safety. Of girls jogging, running, walking, whatever. There's nothing there, like you said, a couch campus. It has a blue light on top of it. If there's some scumbag out there that wants to do something, they can run to a cop.
Most people I know, including my wife, carry their cell phone.
Well, some girls run their cell phones.
I'm just saying.
Girls' couch carries cell phones. They got blue lights everywhere.
Well, I'm just telling you, it's pretty open. And I think that was why they cut the trees.
Obviously, that's a question I know.
Well, and I'm just looking from a security perspective. I feel safe walking the trail because I have a view of about 100 yards in each direction. It's not like someone could just jump out of the...
What about my buttons?
That's actually...
I was just...
I mean, I'm just saying it's a concern. But I don't think that's an expense they put into the park was to have lights and in a emergency lights. I mean, they don't have it on the streets. People use cell phones. It's something to take into consideration, but...
I think it's a valid point. And I've thought about it.
It is a valid point. I know a lot of people don't carry cell phones when they're jogging. Some do. Some may carry a pistol in the room while they're walking. I don't know. But you got young girls...
Why do you point at me when you said this?
You got young girls.
People carry a pistol when they walk. Why do you point at me? Anyway, speaking of a real hazard on the trail, whether you have a gun on or not, it's still a dangerous place to cross. It's on Cedar Street. And I think you need to have somebody look at that, Rachel, all seriousness. Because when you come up, it's guiding you to cross on the other side of the hill.
Yeah.
So the Main Street traffic coming down Main Street, you can't see that traffic from that location. And I know enough to like cross down the road more. But if you follow the trail, it wants you to cross on the down slope near the overpass where the train tracks are. And your blind spot is that left side. It should be more even where the park entrance is. It should be right across from that. And then you're safer. Because then you could see both. You're at the top of the hill, you can see the entrance. So I meant to bring that up too. I should have mentioned that to you earlier. But if you can just maybe get together and Greg, is this a marking issue? If re-marking it to move it over and it's like maybe 30 feet, make a huge difference as far as safety, especially with a bicycle. When you're trying to get started, you want to know there's no car coming over that hill.
Yeah, I think I... when I did it, I walked up and crossed where you enter the park. Because it's a safe...
And most people would. But I mean, the park should be... it should direct people that way if possible. That's just...
I'm sure we can look at it.
Okay, if you could do that. Any other questions or concerns about this?
That's why I'm going to get back to my original point. So we're looking at about a cost of $5,500 a year in labor turns. And, you know, I think sometimes the citizenry is a little confused. They don't understand. Because they think we have a whole bunch of guys just hanging out at DPW every day, drinking coffee and all that. You know, it's a pretty sparse operation now. The guys are really out there working. So when people come up with ideas like, well, who's going to maintain it? What are the DPW guys doing?
Yeah.
There are a lot of DPW guys. There's not like a big reserve of people sitting down on the lawnmower with nothing to do. And people would just pitch in, like you said, you know, there's mash laying all over the place. Pick up your...
I mean, I was like willing to organize some kind of cleanup. If somebody's going to do that, that's a good thing. But at the same token, this was all discussed, I remember, in line when the trail was going to be built. And they looked at the gain outweighed the cost because it was something we've never had before. And it's treated like another project. I mean, it is a nine-mile-long park that you can jump on at different sections. And it's extremely well-used. I mean, the other day, we went and took a ride. And there were... there had to be a couple hundred people on that trail on Saturday, all length, the whole length of the trail. There are constantly people on that trail. So it's worth it. And I think it's something good for the people to do. And it came in handy during COVID. It gave people a place to go and walk. It was even twice as much use during last March as it was this March. So it's something...
It's shaped our streets.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing to have. And I think we'll build on it as it gets... We take ownership of it and the public takes ownership of it. And maybe it'll start getting improved even more.
Just a thought along those lines. When you say the public will take ownership of it, you know, we see it all the time all over the country where certain groups, whether it be a youth group of some sort, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, social organization, they adopt a highway kind of thing. And they maintain that as far as cleaning it up. And, you know, we might, somewhere down the road, may want to look at offering some various local groups, especially groups of young people that might want to take on a project like that and say, you know, this is our portion of the trail that we're going to adopt. And every spring, we're going to go and do cleanup.
And that's a community project for a lot of schools who want to have community projects as part of their graduation. Notre Dame does that stuff too. So great idea. It's new. It's only the second year. And the first year got off to a rough start because of COVID. So hopefully, when we can get these paperwork's done like we're doing today, we can then start building on that kind of exact safety. They can clean and maintain and spring cleanup or whatever. Birthday, anything.
Birthday. That's right. We've been doing that for years.
Okay. Anything like... Any other questions or concerns on this? So we in consensus to move this to the special business meeting, which will be... when is it? The 26th, I believe? Right? So we can move that to... You're all in consensus for that? If that gets moved over. Now, the other item is the wastewater air system.
Yes. So part of the 2021 capital project plan, which was approved by council, is to replace the air header system with the wastewater treatment plant. The system introduces supplemental air to the primary wastewater ponds to provide oxygen to the ponds to effectively digest waste. Right now, we are getting only 20% air into that of 100%, which is why you may notice an older, near the ponds or in neighborhoods near the ponds. Because the system is not working properly. We knew that it needed to be replaced. We thought we had a little more time. But it has come to need replacement immediately. And Ray, will you offer any more technical details?
I think you pretty much have that. It's a Schedule 40 galvanized steel line that runs from the main plant where air pumps run, then pumps air under the ground alongside the ponds. And their fingers will go out to the ponds. So there's diffusers like the air bubbler in a fish tank. What has happened is it should be up to about 40 years' worth of life in that pipe. We're only getting 30 years out of it. It's leaking through the joints. It's actually leaking through the sidewalls of it. If you go out there on a rainy day, you'll see the parking lot bubbling. Meanwhile, you need the ponds bubbling. So we desperately need to get that air back into the ponds so we get effective digestion going on. It had been something that had been targeted and forecasted as part of the capital plan. We would normally just be kicking underway right now to get a consultant on board. But we recognized this past winter how severe it was becoming. And that's the reason why we'll be opening bids on Monday.
Someone else I heard. Now, I noticed you're going to be doing it in sections, I guess. You're going to start with the closest section to the building and work your way out to the remotest area. So you'll kind of be cleaning it up as you go along.
It runs from 16 inches all the way down to the six-inch line at the third pond. So what the intent here is to get that 16-inch line in place, valve it off, so it can actually function in re-airate Pond One. Then we go ahead and work on two. Get two done, open the valve on that one, airate two. Finish up on three. Close the business. Then we actually take a look at the remainder of the air system because the original project is to take a look at the compressors and to take a look at the diffusers in the pond. Right now, we don't have enough air getting to the pond. And we're going to look at the diffusers.
Right.
So this will be phase one of possibly three more phases or two more phases.
Just so you know, so this will come back a couple more times before it's finally the project's complete. And hopefully, it can last another minimum 30 to 40 years.
We're taking some steps in order to put some safeguard protection so it does not react with the soils. This will be wrapped immaterially.
We have reserves for this, correct?
Yeah. It's coming out of water.
That much wastewater.
Water, wastewater.
From the sewer fund. And yes, we do have reserves to do the project. It's fully funded.
And that's what they're in there for.
Right.
You understand these things all day. They're constantly going to end.
Well, and we're putting... And I also understand we're putting money away for this rainy day. So we live to bond this up. So...
This goes back to, and comes up every year at budget time. And I know it's been a concern of Rosemary's as well. Why are we continually raising the water and sewer rates? This is the reason why.
It's built in.
Right. We do it a little at a time. So we have this reserve fund for when these types of things come up.
Right.
So we're not raising taxes to do those projects.
Or bonding them up.
Bonding them up.
Taking on that more than... So also, as you'll notice, the resolution has X's in it. By the time we vote on this on the 26th, the names will be filled in. The bids will be opened and all that. Fading process will have occurred. And we'll have a name and we'll have a price in there. Okay? So just so you know, that's why it's set up that way now. Any other questions then or concerns? So we're in consensus to move this to the special business on the 26th. Now, the NBRC grant for Bank Street water line improvements.
Yep. So as we look at cohesive development around the city, including Bank Street,